Call the meeting order at 6:01 PM. We will start on a pledge of allegiance.
Three, I'm on that, sorry. A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the roll call, that's for the board members. The microphone in front of you, if you touch the little keypad or the little pad in front of the microphone, a green light will come on. So that anytime you speak, you can just keep your finger on that button, and it will illuminate green, which means it is on, once you take your finger off, it is not. So we'll start the roll call, please.
Hey, Ms. Dirk Coe?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson?
Present.
Mrs. McHugh?
Present.
Mrs. Durst?
Present.
Mrs. Blaxey?
Present.
Mrs. Roseville?
Present.
Mrs. Jordan?
Present.
All four members are present. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
We have one amendment if we could add to personnel under consent agenda, additional assignment, Michelle Lynch, I.T.A.
Okay, any other amendments? And a motion then?
Make the motion for adopting the amendment during the agenda without the, or with the one motion.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. McHugh to adopt the agenda as amended for the March 22nd, 2021 regular board meeting. And for the discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carry. Before we move into the consent agenda, let's just remind the public that our attending today, since we haven't been together in a long time, I believe out in the hallway, there is this yellow sheet that describes public participation in board meetings, as well as forms to fill out should you wish to address the board during the public comment, which comes after the reports, and you would give that to Ms. Kyler.
To me.
Oh, I'm sorry, to Mrs. McHugh. Sorry, to Mrs. McHugh. See, I told you it's been a long time since we've done this. So now we're on to the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, you're approving amendments for the regular meeting of February 27th, 2021, as presented. You're also approving general fund bills in the amount of $364,958.53 and AP payroll checks in the amount of $18,990.46, for a total of $383,948.99, with checks numbered 65927 through 66019. And ACH transfers in the amount of $475,929.44, for a total of $859,878.43, and no checks voided. An additional bill in the amount of $13,389.28, with check numbers 66020 through 66028, and no checks voided. Under personnel, we've got the change of assignment, Wendy Fisher, kitchen cashier, to J. Junior Senior High Assistant Cook. The resignation of Adam Ricker as JV baseball coach. The retirement of Claire Jackson, Junior Senior High Assistant Cook of 25-plus years. And an additional assignment of Mike Walsh, JV baseball coach. I would make a motion of the approved consent agenda as presented.
There's an addition.
Oh, what's in there? Okay, I'm sorry, there's an addition? Okay. Michelle Lynch, I.T. Lynch? You ready? I.T.A.
Support.
Notice by Mrs. Durst, supported by Mrs. Blaxey, consent agenda. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. We'll move on to the approval of the closed minutes. You can do this with one motion if you like. The members that were on the board when the closed sessions took place, have white holders in front of them. Take a moment and review those closed session minutes. If you have not already. Intermittent motion. Once you're ready.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the closed session minutes of November 23rd and December 14th, 2020, as presented.
Support.
Support, or motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Blaxey, to approve the closed session minutes from 11/23/20 and 12/14/20. Further discussion. The five members that were present for those, if they actually signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, name? Say name. Motion carry. All right, let's move to administrative reports, and we will start with Mrs. Hankins, over at the elementary school. Mrs. Hankins? Above the number, is there any light? Above the number?
Check, check. All right. All right, well, as I said, we're at the elementary school, and we're racking up one school year to another. Tomorrow night, we have our kindergarten kickoff. We have about 53 students registered right now for our kindergarten day development, kindergarten programming, which is very urgent, because this is the last year we have about 27. So we're very encouraged by those numbers. It will be virtual this year, and we had our parents pre-register, and we sent out Google invites, but we may have more employees as well. We have those postcards out, those questions, and you can never basically, so hopefully, our number will be higher than that, but we'll continue to register those students as they filter in. We're also preparing to ramp up our yearly standardized testing. As far as being aware, we're not on a separate safety place, so we've got our third and fifth grade students registered, and we just completed our P-10, which I will share with you in the next board meeting. That testing will begin April 12th for our fourth grade students. The fifth graders get four tests, and third and fourth grade students get two. At this point, the third grade reading law is still in effect. No students that are not, well, below that provision are not reaching a certain cut score. We'll have a mandatory retention this year, depending on other interventions in America and places. So we're watching our legislation carefully to see if it changes. There's a lot to talk about. I include some information for you, and we have tapes to look at, for our kids reading now, that work summer school program that we're going to be offering this summer. We've had almost all students' families participate, and we did two or three families out. We used our extended literacy grant for this, and we're very excited to be offering for all first school, third, fourth grade students. Students get to pick a book with their teacher, they get nine books with their teacher, and every 10 to 14 days around the summer, those books will be mailed home to their houses. The students get to keep those books, they read them with their families, or some discussion questions, and then at the end of that, they're included in nine books, they get a prize. The program, data suggests that two to three months of games are made in the summer for students participating in all nine books. So we're very excited to have those books. In the end of our student decision vote, the elementary, we are very excited about literacy, and we're excited to send out the students, and let them choose the books, and help them out this summer. We're also going to be offering our backlayers program, which we use right now for intervention and enrichment. Students will have access to that all summer long. The company, Edgewood, we got that through, is also updating the program to a program called MyCapp, which is supposed to be more gamey and a little more exciting for the kids. And they're going to let us tie with that this summer as well. So the students will have accessible programs. We're excited to kind of check out the data and see what kind of goals we see for the students participating in those programs as well. I put a word in here about March reading month. We've been reading together the Chocolate Touch, every student got a book at home, and they've been participating in different activities with that book. I really hope you got a chance to check out the video. That is the cool maid, she does a great job, the students are excited, and decorating that space. In my report, I also included updates on the strategic angles, but it looks like we'll talk about that later, so if you have any questions, may I?
Thank you, Ms. Hankins. Have you, um, board members, for the second?
Thank you.
I will say the library to me is very good.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, as you can guess, Mr. Crowe, high school, senior high school.
The number doesn't appear to be blinking, does that sound? Thank you, everybody. Schoolwork, I appreciate the ESF being here tonight. I'm glad to see everybody in person for a change. Just a couple of things around the Junior Senior High School that we'll point out here tonight. There's a lot of things going on, obviously, but there's, I just want to just make sure I do want to point out. Spring test is coming, I think this is. I think this is, I think it's mentioned that in her report, that stuff, ESAT, SAT round three of MAP testing is coming, so a lot of testing coming up in the spring, April, and May. We look forward to when these go out. We look forward to, depending on the ad as soon as we get it. And then also, our staff is going to be looking at it for all of our students. So let's come up soon, if you look in the back, well, there you can see our NWA map wall is now further through the construction phase. We have some students that are helping us paint. And once we have our fall scores, our winter scores up there, we will show the students what's going on back there, and the grade levels. It's kind of like, not a competition, but it's a way for the grade levels to push each other, you know? So sixth grade, you know, where to give them a goal for the spring. If they reach that goal, we'll do something for them, most likely something here in cafeteria, or if they need some party, something like this. So at each grade level, we'll have the opportunity to improve and watch improvements. So our plan is to have that going, however you change the data, of course, inside. The rest of the class stays the same, but that's the idea, is just to kind of start getting the kids involved with the data as well, which is our students and their school boards and their parents and their kids too. They have some ownership of that, they might take some more pride in testing. If they do that three times, it can't be, can't be fatiguing for a lot of the kids too. A couple of things, spring break, you know, is coming up. Shugley and I have been talking about some ideas for returning from the spring break, so we will keep you guys updated on those things, and look by that, and just being, returning our face-to-face learning for spring break. Classroom walkthroughs, Mr. Crowe, I've completed some walkthroughs last week. We are still gathering our data, and we're going to present it to our staff. I think by next board meeting, I have some of that information for you too, if you'd like. Just some ideas of what we're seeing in the classrooms, and some of the year-long data that's probably out. So that's our third round, so we kind of have a lot of data we should look over, and see what's going on. Another thing to take a look at, at your leisure, staff survey data, that was put out a couple of weeks ago. Just an idea of what your staff's at, how they're feeling. We talked about that with the school improvement team. We'll also talk about that in our next team meeting. Coffee with the principal, you can take a look at that, Mr. Reddick and myself. Other things we're looking for in our next observations are, recently, we completed a differentiation professional development through Michigan Virtual University. So the idea is for our teachers to start displaying some of the ideas that they learned about in that PD, start displaying that in the classrooms, and so we should be able to walk in, and we should court myself and see those things under our next walkthroughs and observations. If you look, also, we did have a little bit of a board policy review at our last team meeting. Kind of pointed out to the staff, where you can find the things, the board documents inside of our website, and then at your leisure, they have a 3,000 and a 7,000 sections, and more of the stuff that applies to the staff. So we'll go over those a couple of times as we go throughout this school year, or as we wind on here. Last couple of things, scheduling has begun, Mr. Crowe, Mrs. Gackey and I, we didn't meet last week. Mrs. Gackey, of course, is going to be out for this week, I believe, with some other issues, personal family issues going on, but we could have a good brainstorm session. We are close to a schedule for next year, a master. So the goal is to have that done before we leave here, and the students and the staff. And then finally, last, but at least, seniors last day, May 21st. Prom planning is underway, we're still hoping to make that happen. We'll keep you posted on that. And then ideas for our students that have been, that have kind of fallen behind, either in credit or when it comes to substance in classrooms in junior high schools, have fallen behind this year. There's a House Bill out there that would support some additional extended learning. So we're looking at a possible zero hour or seven hour here at the Junior Senior High School for April and May, which would also lead into our summer school, which we'd like to run from July, by June 14th, July 9th. So we do have a lot of staff attrition, we do have a lot of students in the weeds, so there's a couple of programs that we hope that will help our students catch up, and, you know, as best we can, especially in these times. So that is all that I have there. If you have any questions, I'll give you an answer.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, you mentioned the staff circuit data. How many staff members do you have in the building?
Well, that technically was more for, I gave it to the teachers, teaching staff, but overall, I would say there's, you know, 240.
Okay. But you just asked the teachers to fill out? Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you know exactly how many students right now are ineligible to graduate?
Eligible?
Yes.
Well, you mean that they're not eligible?
Yeah. Not close to.
Not close to, well, not close to, one or two.
Okay.
On the bubble, oh, five.
Well, five.
We're working with those students, we know their families, we know them, and part of, one of, at this point currently, we're offering our Saturday schools for those students, maybe we'll catch up on some things that we can make, cause that could help. But we're hoping that, you know, they take advantage also of April, May, or summer, no, April, May, zero or seven hours.
How many students do you have in the graduate class?
Graduate class, I believe it's a little, or seventy, maybe seventy-one, or seventy-five?
Seventy-seven. Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
So, Brad, the zero hour, is that just for the seniors, or is that for juniors?
That would be for, anyone interested, as long as we have staff to fill those out, so six through eight, and then nine through twelve. And then we ought to head on to the subject areas too. We're looking to focus on math and English.
Now, is this get, is this sent out to the individual parents who child qualifies for this, or is it up to the student to sign up for it? As you can imagine, that wouldn't turn out.
Yeah, once it's, once we got things finalized, so if we're not ready to finalize, we'll basically head by the second. Not the week we come back from spring break, but the second week. We'll make contact with those families that are, who need to do this, and we'd like to see them. We would also look for others that may, you know, if you've got a night character who maybe failed first half in English, nine, this year, you know, they could potentially have the opportunity to come back and do it, make up for it, or the summer, rather than next year.
Now, is this like the zero hour for April and May? Is this like an alternative to summer school, so that they're going to have to go well?
Yeah.
Depends on how far?
We'd like it to be, hopefully through this, maybe we can limit the numbers and have the consumption.
Is the zero hour at the seventh hour before and after normal sleeping?
Any other questions for Mr. Crowe? All right, thanks, sir. Honest, sir?
Honest, sir.
Now it works.
Now it's working, so thanks, everybody.
All right, Mr. Kujak? Need some transportation?
Good evening. Fortunately, with spring sports starting up, we have a self-host driver that's been working for the last couple of weeks, and been working pretty steadily with it, so, and then things are picking up very well. So we've got several quotes that have been turned in this evening forward. Several quotes have been turned in for the parking lots already. Get another company to come out, again, today, looking at the roof, thanks, Mr. Coe. For explanation, he thinks that, after looking at the roof today, he's going into a full survey of it. He thinks we can be away with doing some repairs there, repairing some stuff that wasn't installed correctly with the first building. Thinks we can probably get another five, 10 years maybe out of it. He's pretty confident in five, and save a ton of money. So he's going to do that survey, let us know what that cost will come at, give us a little more time for budget, in the coming years, for complete roof, or partial roof, at a time as close to doing the whole thing at once. So that's good news. The concession stands back, it's over at the football soccer field, and we started reopening those, we got a lot running in again. We got a few boxes that need to be replaced still. Most of our dating last couple, planning it last week, beginning this week, we're working on baseball fields, softball fields, got some post full health day reset, some needs for working. Got it back to where they are supposed to be, a lot of heating going on. There's some heating going on, we want to dug up, and work on the current ed here in the next couple of days also. So things are progressing for outdoor sports. Other than that, just been extremely busy trying to get stuff ready.
Questions for Mr. Kujak? I just got one, is the self-host driver helping keep you off a little more?
Yes, so far, yeah, I've got to drive one, two days this week, but that's it, so. Definitely, definitely a bonus there.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Kujak. Is your technology there, if you're in the house, if you want to speak? If you can make that microphone work, we'll let you.
Test one, that's what I had to say, test one, two.
It started working when I started.
What's that?
It started working when I was talking with the language.
Should have new graders, I don't know. We could try that.
All right, while you're troubleshooting that, I'll just say that the microphone we're using seems to be really good, so this will be helpful for, we're back in front of more people publicly that they can hear us, and that's always been an issue at board meetings. So this is, it's, I'm not allowed one, but I know not everybody is as loud as I am, so this is very helpful, so nice job on that. So you get an A on these microphones, and the jury's out on the handcuffs. Anything else to be reported either?
There was.
I don't really have a report to do.
That is just fine, considering you were here. Mr. Walsh? Bring us on on the administrative reports, please.
Hello, everybody. So, quite a bit of information to share out of the board notes, but I will try to be quick and concise, and... Not as long. I'm just going to keep talking, flip it on. If you need to speed up, just let me know though. So Governor Whitmer had recently passed a supplemental budget. In that supplemental budget included the appropriation of SR2 funds, that was part of the December stimulus package. Those funds, unfortunately, when presented to Governor Whitmer, were tied to an additional House bill, one in which would give local counties the authority to make determinations on in-person education and athletic events. She, in turn, did not pass that House bill, therefore, only a portion of those SR2 funds at this point are being appropriated. So it ends up being about 43% of those funds are appropriated to district state at this point, and the remaining 57% will be yet to be seen in additional sub-countable. Now, what we do know is that she has at least one year from when those funds were distributed to the state to appropriate to districts, so we will see those funds as they were granted by the type of government. It's just a matter of, so at this point, at any time between now and the December January range, December 21st, January 21st. So, good news is that the part that was appropriated to us, we should be able to see before the end of the year. Our total appropriations, our total allocation, I should say, from that federal stimulus was about $350,000. Forty-three percent of that would bring us to about $150,000 that has appropriated to our district at this time. The other part of that stimulus, or that supplemental budget, sorry, was that the state included a, what they call, an equalization payment out of the state aid fund that essentially guarantees each district will receive a minimum of $450 per pupil. Hello? Okay. So what this means for our district is our appropriation from the SR2 stimulus funds was about $440,000. So we're not going to see a huge, it comes up to about $6,600 in equalization funds, but at this point, any little bit will help. And also, I think it's important to note that we currently mean all the qualifications for those equalization funds, the main determining factor of which is that we need to be offering at least 20 hours of in-person instruction as of March 22nd. So thankfully, we have paid in person and continue to do in person for that. So fully expect to see those funds. Total funding that we expect to see is reflected in our E2 budget, which you guys will be voting on later on tonight, is about $160,000. The allowable uses for these funds are the same uses that were allowed for the original CARES Act funding that was received way back in, about this time last year. Speaking of E2 budgets, so you guys will be voting on those later on this afternoon. I did, I'm not sure if I pretty had a chance to take a look, but I did. In my board notes, I've got the link to have some detail, line-up and detail, of what those adjustments were for this budget. were for, uh, this budget. Um, mainly, what we see is there's, there's a lot of ins and outs that, that end up netting each other, smaller ones, but the major factors that attributed to the, the increase in our net operating deficit that we're projecting is, is two main items, one being SR funds that is referenced about a hundred and sixty thousand, and then the other main factor is a reduction in our virtual learning costs. So we went from ninety-four students, virtual students in semester one, and we went down to fifty-five in semester two, so a pretty tragic decrease in our virtual learning expense. Um, it came up to about eighty-seven thousand dollars, so, which we're gonna save by offering that face-to-face instruction, so that's great. Um, the, the last thing, oh, wait, okay, I'm sorry, A2. So currently projecting that operating loss in A1 of three hundred, uh, or six hundred and twenty-four thousand, with these adjustments for A2, that brings our operating loss down to about three hundred and ninety-three thousand, so it's a change in fund balance of about two percent. Um, the, the one important thing that I want to make sure that everybody's aware of is the other part of those SR2 funding. If we receive the additional SR2 funding, as I mentioned, they have until next December, January range to give out, but everybody, all of the, um, fundings are saying that at this point, they think it's gonna be much, much sooner than that. Um, so when that is, we still have, has yet to be seen, but I think it's important to kind of show you what the effect of that would be if we do receive it. So as I said, that other fifty-seven percent comes out of about two hundred and two thousand dollars in additional funding that we would receive once appropriated, and that would be, again, about additional, um, two percent to our fund balance. So that would be huge for the district if, if we can get that in, so hopefully, the legislators keep working, keep moving forward, and we get something done with that. SR3 funding is now out, so that was part of the latest stimulus funding that just came out, uh, I think it was last week, or maybe the week, the week prior. Um, in this funding, again, you're gonna see a substantial amount, um, and it's all gonna be based on Title I funding, very similar to how SR1 and SR2 was. So our district share currently is being estimated at approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, the one difference between SR3 compared to the previous SRS was that they are earmarking at least twenty percent right now for, uh, those funds have to go to learning loss, uh, addressing learning loss. So that's the one major difference there. The remaining eighty percent would be allowable for the same, uh, as the previous year that fund. So with that, we're still, it's a ton of information coming out every day, still a lot of unknowns, and we have yet to see a final dollar amount of the eight hundred thousand that I, that I gave you was an estimate right now, but still, you know, that, that could change at this point. But that, that's all we have right now, and as, as additional information comes out on that, I will, uh, make sure that I keep the rest of it, and Brad and I will continue to work to make sure that the district is utilizing these funds to the best, best, uh, use possible. That is my train.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions for Mr. Walsh, who's so far? I'll be back in the A2 later. I know a board for Mr. Oki tonight, he is out in Lakeville, I believe, with our ladies' basketball team, hoping to get a, uh, score, they only have forty-three to twelve, uh, for Memphis. So, in the fourth quarter, definitely, so a lot of parents who sent it in, so that's good news. Ladies will be moving on to a game against Marlette on Wednesday, so, anyone can be beat. Wish them luck for Wednesday. All right, strategic plan update? Second you're presenting?
They both, they both had their updates.
Oh, perfect, all right.
I think it's working. All right, so in my, um, board report, I think I, excuse me, bulleted, uh, what we've been working on, um, kind of focused on the three, um, goals, um, that we implement while going through all the COVID craziness. Um, so goal number one, we looked at were the communication and community engagement, and the goal was to develop and implement procedures to improve communication between staff, building, parents, students, and the community. Um, with the staff, um, I've been describing the staff about monthly, learning what's going on, um, to get surveyed, um, to get feedback about what things are going in the building. I work closely with the union, um, rep, she, um, also sent out a survey, that she can bring to me any, um, suggestions or concerns the staff might have. Um, that was utilized a few times last year, but this year, um, most staff is responding to my survey and can provide any, um, issues or feedbacks that they have. Um, staff are able to get, um, ideas from our agenda for every one of our meetings, um, there's always staff in, open to a policy, and then, um, they're provided weekly on Sundays with a Monday envelope of just reminders and updates and things that are going on in the building, which all of that is in that folder. Um, for parents, we just continue to use school messenger, um, that seems to be the best way, especially when we send out short text messages. Um, I help coffee with the principal, coffee with the principals, um, I'll be having another one after spring break from that, um, I've been working with a few of those parents, you know, parent advisory committee, um, and we continue to keep our social media outlets moving as much as possible. Goal, and I'm also going to work next year to have a fifth grade student advisory committee as well, um, we were unable to do that this year, but we can't make the classes, and it was too hard for them, one student for each class at a time, with everything else going on, so hopefully, if we're able to make the classes again next year, that will, um, happen as well. Um, goal two, the culture for learn, learning management, foster a culture of respect, of cohesive environment for working, learning, and teaching. Um, those are tied closely with the goal number one, is kind of going hand in hand. So next year, we can do that this year for the staff, it was really important for me to, um, work out the staff morale throughout this crazy time. During Christmas, we did a call-in radio show where we had some prizes in the office, and we had to be caller, whatever, and they would win a prize, so we would play a Christmas song, sang it to call in, they would win a gift card or, um, a peanut basket. Um, we've had elves and leprechauns throughout the building, and then when they found those and brought those to us, they earned lottery tickets, we haven't had any in winter, so first, maybe just little things like that to keep the staff going, um, when times are tough, and we also, we even have any more monthly PPIs assemblies, um, we've been having those virtually, so, um, I'm sure you've seen some of them on Facebook, our student of the month, and that we continue to, um, implement our free P, so we say we're, we'll be responsible via the TV screens in the classrooms, we do those virtually. Um, obviously, goal three is super important, academics and program, we're working to review, revise, and expand all educational, um, and extra, there are turkeys or something like that. Um, so we continue to focus on wind time, um, we're in the third year of implementation for that, and obviously, as mentioned before, with not being able to fit students, there was a little bump in the road for that, so, um, our parents have been in the classrooms, one year for classroom during wind time, and, um, working with those students, and we've been able to do it, and just looks a little, a little bit different, but all students are getting what they need, um, based on their specific individualized data, and our school improvement team continues to meet to review our reading and writing curriculum, which is still a large school at the county, which I mentioned that will continue into next year, um, and we're continuing to monitor the implementation of our math expressions curriculum, and now that's high in social space, which has been up to date, we're going to pilot a couple of programs, um, to see what we would like to implement there. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Metz? No, go ahead, Ken. Um, I, I was just wondering, you know, I, I was in the strategic plan was put together before COVID started, just before COVID started, but as I think about the potential of some funding being tied to additional learning, um, I, I know it's probably functionally easier to do in this building, uh, with older students, but I would, um, I would think, my opinion would be that if we had that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think it was, it would have to be spent, um, for additional learning, I'd be looking at both sides, both schools for that. Might be a little more challenging in elementary school, but, um, perhaps something to think about if this money's coming through, who's thinking about how we can spend it?
Yeah, we have some conversations around that, we're waiting for more clarification from the state, um, there are some stipulations on it as far as if it's eight weeks long, um, so we're waiting to see if we can have certain students in for maybe one meeting them intensive, because it's hard to get families, um, commit to hold eight weeks' debt as well, so as soon as more clarity gets out of that, we'll definitely be working on a plan. Um, we tossed a few things around at our school improvement meeting last week, but there's just too many unknowns right now for us to make a specific plan, so hopefully, we'll get more information, we'll be able to get to it.
Okay, thank you, I just, I know it's challenging, bussing at everybody in the small audience, Mr. Kujak can put another buss up?
Yeah, just another buss.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Metal by Vizzette in that spot will continue to rotate through, so we, we have some report on the strategic plans, goals are kind of ongoing, otherwise, we're gonna kind of hear the same things, so I'll give an update of the future scenario next week. Uh, just a touch base, and what Susan was talking about is the, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, they are bringing, bringing out some open restrictions on it, uh, but it does have to be eight weeks, Monday through Friday, uh, the net doesn't give a number of hours, um, and it has to be face-to-face, so the one thing we're running into is finding staff that is willing to give up their entire summer, or five days a week, to give them instruction. Um, we have the plans that have to be due by April fifteen, I had a gig with the county, um, and everybody's talking about how they're writing those plans, so it's, uh, we're probably going to write several plans, and then as they get clarification, use the one that's appropriate. Um, we would really like to see four days a week, two hours a day, and be able to rotate to face-to-face and virtual. Um, the program that she's already got, the three, the three now, with time rate, if we bring them in for a couple hours, couple days a week, to really work with that program to get the most out of them, so it is an ongoing process, um, we just have no clarification whether or not the programs we're, um, normally running would qualify for that money that they're offering. I guess what you're trying to do.
Can, can we hire outside of the teaching stands, student teachers that are just graduating, or anybody else who runs the program, or we do mandate teachers here, can we hire teachers outside of staff for summer school?
Yeah, so there's no stipulation of who's required for, however, one is, one of our staff can do a thousand dollars stipend, if they're meeting those requirements, so that's what we weren't sure either, if we can get it, one teacher runs it four weeks, another teacher runs it four weeks, if we have to have that continuation, if we can do a thousand dollars for both of our ten people, so we're looking at all of those.
But we would try to, if they say we have to have it, we are gonna try to entice people either from here or elsewhere to teach them?
Is that thousand dollars, is that thousand dollars stipend out of hundred and twenty? Is that seven?
No, that would be all part of it.
Okay. But we don't get that if it's an out of teacher. We believe.
Clarification right now is the name of our teachers.
Okay, great. That's a good point, though, there's, strategic, probably, probably gonna spend eight weeks. Okay. Anything else important? All right, we have come to the time for public comment, Mr. Kujak, you have any? All right, we do not have anybody registered for public comment, so we'll move on to, uh, Agenda Point Nine, Correspondence, the only correspondence we have tonight is our Truman School Wannos, uh, which are quite lengthy this month. Uh, many COVID things, um, here. Any comments, questions, or others from the board? If you haven't been on email this afternoon, um, this is how we sent out, uh, got us all registered for Truman Wannos, so you will see them in real time from now on, instead of, uh, a month late, quite, not a month late, but a month after they come out. Some good things about face coverings and all of the rules there. Lots of COVID stuff. Anybody have any questions on any of their notes? All right. We'll move on to old business, that was the time of our meeting, where we look at our extended continuity of learning plan, or ECO, and we reconfirm that each month, I believe it's actually one of the mandates in the funding, uh, pieces that we do this each month, we've been doing this for, seems like the last year now, so Mr. Kujak, any updates on the ECO?
Thank you, uh, again, continuity of learning plan is working well, um, our attendance rates continue to be at ninety percent or higher, so our students continue to show up, um, the current numbers have become the ROI, uh, we've seen that over the last three weeks that they get to do it, despite only a fifteen and a half percent positivity rate right now, um, testing just over four hundred people, uh, per week. Um, with that, uh, the Memphis community, we've been very fortunate, uh, currently have about twenty-five students that are on quarantine, uh, it's not twenty-five positive cases, that's just students that are out, and that's what's allowing us to continue to be face-to-face. Um, as you guys have seen, every other community or district in the coming secondary level has gone virtual, um, their numbers are very high, staffing issues, so that's the reason they had to. Um, working with the ed部门team every day, we're making sure to monitor our numbers, um, they are doing, you can't ask each other, tracing to let me know right away, hey, we had a, a positive, we have this many students exposed, it's gonna be this many kids that are out of the district each week, so we'll continue to monitor that, um, if it became a problem with staffing, or the number of students that would be out, and obviously, we think that if it did, we'd pause our face-to-face and go virtually. Uh, but as we have, we're continuing to go through this and do a great job, the consent rates and the numbers that are currently in Memphis many schools is my recommendation, that we continue with the face-to-face, um, implementation with the virtual option.
Thank you, Mr. Kujak, any questions about the ECO?
I have a question that's somewhat related, um, so when students are home on quarantine, they are able to access their, um, work via Google Classroom, correct? Okay, so, do all the teachers update Google Classroom daily? And if so, is it, is it done like during their class period, or at the end of the day?
Mr. Grabber, step up, step up.
Yeah.
Uh, the teachers will update your classrooms as they have assignments to put in there, so, um, you know, we asked them, when we sent the list out to the teachers who, students that are, their students, uh, they'll put in their homework usually given that day, or the next morning, uh, and they may have, it just depends on the teacher, uh, they may have five days of work, you know, Monday, Friday, some may put it in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, some they put it Monday, Friday, it just depends on how they are working in their classrooms, and in classrooms themselves, they may not have, um, you know, assignments every day, they may be reading, they may be reviewing, so it doesn't matter how much stuff they have to do, so it just depends on, on how the classroom goes. It's kind of like an extension of that, you know, they're posting whatever they're doing for the kids, and they're posting it, and so if I gave you a couple of worksheets, I'll post that in there then.
So they will post the worksheet in Google Classroom, and then the kid, the child, the student at home can print it out?
Yeah.
And do the work?
A lot of it is, a lot of it now, uh, they would have to print out, a lot of it now, they would have something that maybe, uh, is a Google form, maybe checklist, and then closer answer on that, and then, you know, more electronic version, then you've got things that you can print out.
Okay.
Reading, they'll like scan the book, wherever they might scan a book or page, if it's that, or if they have their books, they read pages, you know, this through those.
Okay. So then if the student that is home, learning virtually, so to speak, because they're on quarantine, they, if they, if they did not understand something, or they have questions, they reach out directly to the teacher for that?
Yes, they, they, we encourage them to email the teacher, or contact in Google Classroom, um, those are the best ways to do it, um, teachers are free, and they're promised to answer those, and we've talked about, uh, again, in our last meeting, about making sure that we're being active to those students, especially if they're, you know, have questions. Um, some after school, some teachers will answer some things after school or before as well, that just depends on whether we're there at the time, so, um, but, but, uh, we are, we encourage the families when we call and say, um, we're starting to be in there for your questions, you can reach out to your teacher directly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We also encourage, we encourage the teachers to reach out to the students as well, um, sometimes that does happen, um, and sometimes they're, they're busy, there's bits busy in, in the classroom, so, and it'd be, I don't know, I guess they think it's funny over here, but, um, they're doing, they're doing a great job, too, really working hard on, for our kids here.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabber, if kids are having difficulty, you had talked about Saturday school, but not quarantine, correct?
Well, if they couldn't, they're quarantined, no way.
Okay, so if, if kids are falling behind because of the virtuals? Okay, so if, if kids are falling behind because of the virtual schooling quarantine, what systems do we have in place for them? I know we have, you know, days that they can make up the work, that extends the time out. But what system do we have in place to try to keep these kids from falling further behind?
I mean, again, the assignments from the classroom, we encourage them to reach out to the students, to teachers that don't understand. And then again, they get the time when they come back to work. You know, there's a certain amount of days per day off. And then when they come back, we encourage, you know, if we could have a Saturday school, we would. I just, we haven't got to, we're having virtual Saturday schools coming back yet. So the idea is that when they come back, they can take the time to make, they can make up the network. They've got state class in place, you know, once they get back, they can go to, you know. Our state class is kind of fluid in the high school, where they can't go see, you know, Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so if they have, you know, worked into a math or English or different class. If it's not, if they're with Mrs. Delong, they can go down and see one of their teachers. And then, and then again, Saturday school is the whole place when they come back. We encourage them to go there as well. And we're hoping that once our zero hour or seven hour kick in, we really have that, that extra, extra for them.
Is it ever an opportunity for, as I understand it, it's not in the teacher's contracts for their classroom to be recorded?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Is that ever something that would be an option in the future, hopefully?
I would hope so.
Okay.
I, I can, if I could snap a finger and change that, but I just, I don't have any control over that, that, that unit, you know, that's a bargaining unit, and that's something that, you know, we could, we could ask them for. It has to be something that, I think, what, the way I was explaining to you is that it would be considered a change in the workplace, or working environment. So it would change the structure of that contract, so it would be something that we negotiated. I think currently, they do video and audio recording the classrooms pretty good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it would be great, you know, I, you know, hope that one day we could do that. But I don't know how we, if we can get there or not, but.
Okay.
It's something we definitely suggested recently.
I have a question for Mr. Grabba. Was the Google Classroom, are parents allowed to get the human password if they were to call in?
Like invite to the classroom?
Yeah.
Yes, oh yeah.
You know, many students don't share their username and password with their parents. So if a parent were to call the office to get that information, would you give that?
Oh, you want their Google password, if they're being?
To see what their assignments are, yes.
Uh, yeah, they can, they can be, parents can be invited to the teacher's classroom at any time.
At any time.
And you can be in there yourself, you don't even have to worry about their passwords. You can just be, you can see it all.
So we can see exactly whether it was being done or not.
Yeah.
One last question. When, when we had the virtual going on, a lot of the teachers posted different things. It might not have been their classroom grade as they were teaching it, but they did put together posts and stuff like that. Are they still doing that constantly?
A lot of teachers do. I encourage them to use Google Classroom. I have my own, and I try to use that with them to kind of model that behavior. So I do have teachers that will use it daily. Mr. Ringardt does all his tests and quizzes right through Google Classroom. It's all in there, you know, it's all virtual, so. He'll go on the track, he'll just go get those tests and those cases. They'll do, Mrs. Lucassi does a good job of putting her work in there and maybe some lecture notes and things like this. She does videos. Some teachers do their own videos, you know, after school, we'll post them, you know, so. It varies. Our goal, obviously, is to use as much as possible, especially now, but it does vary. I think comfort, comfort, comfortability of the teachers too, you know. We did spend some time this summer working on Google Classroom. For a lot of our teachers, it's still, still new. But at this point, you know, we, we, again, at all our means, I just encourage them to make sure they're using that. You know, you don't have to use it to supply it, you use it to supplement your, what you're doing.
I have another question based off of parent information. Is it public knowledge for parents to know that they need to go into a school classroom to see the assignments, has that have been posted or sent home or sent in, you know, on email? It looks like everything, I think so, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I know last year when we were in the shutdown phase, there were many parents that wanted to go, were ready to access, they just asked for it. I mean, that's really all you need, is just to ask us for it.
Would you consider talking about that at your next meeting with the principal?
Yeah.
Or maybe giving, or maybe giving even a quick demo on how to for those parents that maybe aren't?
How to, how to use it?
Yeah.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a good suggestion, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I think a lot of parents would use that more in Google Classroom, see what's doing now. I said it coming up later on Skyward, like last week, though.
Exactly.
So Jimmy John.
Well, but I guess I, there's a difference, though, when it comes to grades. When you put your grades, you're putting them all on Skyward. So you're going to watch, look at Skyward to see, you know, what's, what's doing.
Right, but like, so that they're not late.
Right.
Just know what they're doing right now.
Mr. Grabba, I, I think the, Mrs. Rosenau, or Mrs. Gerret, I can't remember who you just said. Idea would be great to take that out there.
Yeah.
Don't wait for the next meeting with the principal, maybe shoot one tomorrow.
Sure.
Give me a couple of days, but I think that, I was unaware that the parents could address that. I think, I think there are probably a lot of parents that would like to. And then there are probably some parents that will struggle doing it, unless we show them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else for Mr. Grabba? All right, we are back to the ECO, and so if you have any questions, or comments, concerns. Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Bobst, to reconfirm the ECO plan as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, it was Mrs. Thompson, I'm sorry. Make that Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Bobst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, on to the A2 budget. Mr. Walsh is back, I think.
Okay, starting with the food service budget. What we see in A2 is a small increase for overall operating revenue there. Essentially, the major change in food service is the free lunch program that was extended through the end of June. So we are seeing a large increase in our federal subsidy, our federal reimbursement for that because we are serving so many more lunches. Due to the free lunch program, we are seeing a much larger increase than what's originally budgeted. So that's the increase in revenue. And then likewise, on the other side, we are seeing a large increase in the food expense because, again, we are serving much more lunches. So they are almost offsetting, the revenue does exceed the expense slightly, so we do see a small increase there for the food service. So we are now projecting a total operating income in our food service account for about $14,000 per year. Projected fund balance in the year will be about $61,000, or about 15%. So that is for food service.
Mr. Walsh?
Yeah.
Quick question about it.
Absolutely.
So, so I understand food cost is, what is our percentage growth in, say, number of lunches? Number of meals, probably, by the way?
You know, that's a great question. I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I will get it for you. I will run the records for that out of the food service program and then let you know how much more exactly. I know it's substantial. I, whether it's double or, you know, 8% higher, I don't know that number right off the top of my head, but I will get it for you.
Yeah, just wondering how much of this is, because food prices are going up as well. So I didn't know how much of this is being impacted by price by the increased number of volume.
I will say that increased prices are a large portion of it because our federal subsidy with the summer food, extended summer food program, which is what the program is under, our reimbursement rate is actually higher than the normal federal program. So I do know that a food cost increase is part of that increase in expense. So not only are we serving more meals and buying more food, but we also have increases. But I will definitely get you the number of, of the percentage of how much more.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on food service before I move on? Okay, general fund. As I discussed in my board notes, again, the major factors in the adjustments for the A2 adjustments basically boils down to the future funds from the SRT2 funding and then the decrease in the virtual learning expenses. Overall, in A2, we see a decrease in our operating loss of about $231,000. The SRT2 funding and the decrease in virtual learning expense, those two items alone represent an increase of operating income of about $247,000. So those were two of the major factors. Again, I did, I sent over kind of the detail of the smaller adjustments. If you want me to go through them, I'd be more than happy to. But in, in total, we are looking at now, we went from an A1 operating deficit of about $624,000 to we're now projecting $393,000 for the year. That brings our fund balance, we're projecting it in the year of just over $1.3 million, or about 13.71%. And again, just to, just so, so you guys understand that SRT2, the remaining appropriation, if we see it by end of the year, which I, I'm not sure that we will or not. There, there's no additional information on there yet, but if we do see it, we would see our, our fund balance raised by about another 2% if that does come through before the end of the year. And then, as I talked, SRT3 funding is not included in the A2 budget either. At this point, the timing for that is unknown as well. Any questions on the A2 general fund budget?
Mr. Walsh?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, we have that transfer to the food service, we do that $10,000. Do we still do that even when they're in great shape like they are?
We will not, so we will likely see that as an adjustment in our A3 budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we keep that in there only as needed, and then if, at the end of the year, in the A3 budget, you will see that adjusted accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are they putting any lemons on any of the money that you're receiving through COVID relief? As far as where you have to spend them by?
So my question, SRT, SRT1, we've already drawn down and spent. SRT2, we got to spend by September 30th of 2022. And then the latest SRT3 is September of 2023. Anything else on the general fund? Okay, and then internal fund budget. As you can see, there were no adjustments. Again, this, this budget basically tracks activity for the year. So on our final A3 budget, that will be adjusted to show the actual activity for the year. And those, those are our internal beneficiary accounts. Hello, and if you guys have any other questions, I'll be adding answers.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions on any of the A2 budgets? Food service general fund or internal accounts? If not, we'll be looking for a motion to approve them.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the A2 budget 2020-21 for food service general fund and internal accounts as presented.
Support.
And a motion from Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Bobst, to approve the A2 budget 2020 through 2021. Food service general fund and internal accounts as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, next item on our agenda is the NEOLAC policy updates, I believe. And they're up loud. We start with the fall updates, 2020 first reading. Here, we have a chance to pick those in front of that. Mr. McHugh, you want to walk through which ones we're looking at here, just sort of what I think everyone's looked at up, but so we're talking about the same ones.
Sure thing. So a little background, each year, NEOLAC will provide us two updates to do a year of a fall and a spring update because of the non-face to face and virtual meetings that are fall 2020. We chose not to do an update at that time, and that's why we do have a few policies. And then, of course, with that, the way that the second factor came through is all the anti-harassment policies. Are triple kit and different levels of our policies. So really, they're the same policy, but just at different levels. In the fall, they'd be looking at 436201, and that's threatening behavior towards staff members. The emergency removal suspension of fall students, which is 5610. 5611, due process rights revised. 7440, which is the facility security. The committee, I'm sorry, Policy Committee in Metta, just over two weeks ago, or about two weeks ago, and went through all of these policies. Laura and I met with our NEOLAC rep and walked through them with him as well. So basically, we sit down with NEOLAC rep, he kind of talks us through the changes. And then we did the same thing with the Policy Committee. So the Policy Committee has reviewed all of these changes, and these are their recommendations to the board for a first reading. So if there'd be any questions on that, we can address those. Do you want to go through all of them before we make a motion, or do you want to go section by section?
I guess a question for the board is if they don't have a chance to read now. And if so, are there any questions, and then for those that are on the Policy Committee? Any comments, concerns?
The one thing we were able to share, obviously, with the Policy Committee, through some of our new numbers, is the procedure with our board policies. It takes two readings for a policy to be adopted. So tonight is the first reading of these. So if we do approve something, you can catch that at a later time between your next reading. Changes still can be made, so.
I think from the Policy Committee, these that we're talking about now and the spring ones are the recommendations from NEOLAC. It's nothing that we are changing. It is all recommendations to protect yourself in school when you're teaching this to be managed.
Can we do items from A through D together? Or would we be better off looking at them one by one? We'll address the other three, there are the other two separately. Well, there's one NEOLAC and one policy. So let's just look at the fall updates, 2020 first reading, the spring updates, 2021 first reading, the edgar updates, February 21st first reading, and the non-discrimination anti-harassment policies update first reading. We'll have a chance in April to come back and adopt these and make any changes if necessary.
I make a motion that we accept the updates for NEOLAC policies, the fall updates, spring updates, edgar updates, and the non-discrimination anti-harassment policy update.
I support.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Rosenau, to approve the first reading of NEOLAC fall 2020, spring 21, edgar and non-discrimination anti-harassment policies updated as presented. Any further discussion? We will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, let's move on to policy 9130. I believe the Policy Committee put together some changes, and we just go ahead and have somebody make the motion and discuss after that.
Make a motion to overturn the policy 9130 revisions for the first reading.
Support.
All right, a motion from Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Bobst, to approve the first reading of our revised policy 9130 as presented, discussion. Discussion.
The changes came about from using this policy over the past year and just working our way through the policies. We're going to find that as we go through them, that we need to change, revise a little bit. Uh, the committee went through and looked at this and compared it to our other complaint policies, our anti-harassment policies, and use the same timeline as it currently goes. Um, so basically, it's a 10-day timeline from the event that must be submitted, writing for a formal complaint hearing to begin. Um, and then each of those, it's a five-day, for each level, there's a, a five business day, um, timeframe that we ask the administration to, uh, hang on to as we can require for now. Obviously, if there's any time, or depending on availability and things like that, there can be extensions granted, we've done that in the past as well. Uh, but we did feel like, uh, the time we needed to complete this was sufficient, and should be able to get through each of those levels in a five-day timeframe, um, including submitting the request and writing to the board for the fourth level.
I have a question on the second level, first page, second level. Uh, the first change initiated. If the matter cannot be satisfactorily resolved at the first level, it shall be initiated, discussed by the complaint. Is that, there's something missing here?
It shall be initiated and discussed. I believe it's the and.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, the reason we did, uh, that was the other reason, thank you for pointing that out. Um, there was some confusion, uh, we'd asked, we got a legal reach out to us in the past to, to clarify some of that writing, uh, because some of our employees, the staff member supervisor is different than the building administrator, so we wanted to clear up that. Second level is the building administrator, so, um, if it's an event that's happening in elementary school, it'd be the elementary principal, and if it's something that's going on at the junior senior high, it'd be the junior senior high principal.
Okay, fair enough. So and between initiated and discussed. Any other questions, comments from the board? Here we go, a little vote, all in favor, pick a vote, is saying aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carried. All right, we'll go to the last one of this section, which is the adoption resolution. It's a one-pager. Look for a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to rescind old Memphis policies as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. McQ, to adopt the resolution to rescind the old policy. Was it you again?
Yeah.
You guys are throwing your voice. This mask makes me not hear correctly. Motion for Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Thompson, to adopt the resolution to rescind old Memphis policies as presented. So does everyone have a chance to review this, and what questions do you have?
Basically, this is a procedural item, um, right now, we have double policies for all the different areas. So at this point, now that we've gone through, we've got corrections, we've had updates, it'd be the correct time to rescind all old policies, uh, so they're no longer, yes, this is the recommendation.
And the Policy Committee? Met on this, right? So really, this is getting rid of the old book of policies that we're not exactly sure we're all of them are.
Might, might.
Well, from the last couple of years, right?
Yeah.
So this is basically saying that all of those policies are gone, and the old policies, which we have lowered down for the last couple of years, are the policies.
We have been adapting the old policy.
Right.
Currently, the last.
Yeah. But it's getting rid of the old ones, so there's nothing.
That's right.
Okay, any questions? Here we go, a little vote, all in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carried. All right, a discussion on the sinking fund and operating village renewal. I guess I'll pick that up. So, um, Mr. Goodie and I, um, spoke about this as we were getting together, talking about the two different votes we have coming. And it thought it was important that we, as a board, talk about not only promoting, um, those within the community, but explaining, um, properly to everyone, um, who will be voting on them, what they are, because it can be somewhat confusing when you have two valid initiatives on the same ballot. Right, and so, um, in talking to a couple of folks around town, um, I thought it was important that we just kind of talked about how we wanted to, um, address this. And I know that there's, um, there are folks within the, there's the sinking fund committee, um, have engaged a lot of folks to help with the sinking fund and, and driving that forward. There is a really operating village renewal committee, but it's important that folks understand what that is and what isn't. The operating fund, um, uh, the operating village renewal is about 15 to 16% of our overall budget. It is the non-homestead tax renewal. It comes out every five years.
This one's a 10, I said, can you give me the math for that?
Five or 10 years. And so this is, this is 18 mills, which is levied on non-homestead property. So your house is exempt from this, goes back to the original, a long time ago. And so, um, it does not impact, um, hold on, it does impact businesses, um, and non-farm vacant land, um, sometimes. But it is a large portion of our budget. So it is separate from the sinking fund and is part of our normal operating fund. So this is not, you know, we're, here Mr. Kujin talked about the roof, about parking lot, which we all drive through, we all know that's bad. The roof, we don't all see, but our kids do. Those things, those are sinking fund things. The 18 mil non-homestead is, allows us to operate friendly. 15% of our, roughly 15, maybe a little bit more of our, um, of the budget that we've just adopted comes from that, um, village. So that one's very, very important to our ongoing operation. Not that the sinking fund is not, because obviously, we need roof work, whether it's new or repair, we definitely need a parking lot. Uh, those of you that drove in today or come here often, and there's a lot of other things I know that the sinking fund committee is looking at. So, um, it felt important to talk about, certainly, uh, we've got some members in the community here, and we also have our, our, our local cable, and this does get some viewing, viewing. So nice to get that information out there, but also just an open discussion with us about how we, um, can help educate the community on what they're hoping on, um, as we're asking to come to the polls for two school-related villages, one which impacts, um, um, pretty much everybody, and one that, that does not impact everybody, and is a normal force of business that we've been through since the headland was back.
Yeah, so the, the operating village has been in place since proposal A, which was 1994. Uh, so when proposal A passed, they, uh, they brought the operating village into play. The district's way of contributing to their operating fund, so their general fund dollars. Um, and it was discussed at that time that each district, we got to levy 18 mils on non-homestead property, that is not money that the state replaces. So, um, as Mr. Cook said, it's about 1.45 million dollars of our budget. And if we did not pass this renewal, um, that would be 1.5, 45 million dollars that we would not have in funding. Um, so it is a very important item. All taxpayers hold on it, but like you said, it only affects the non-homestead properties. Um, so that, that's a very important topic to have.
I think it's also important to note that this is not an increase in taxes for businesses. This is a continuation of the taxes that they are already paying. This is not an increase. And I've heard some false information about that too, by beginning of the year, Claire, we understand that we're in a pandemic, but this is a continuation of the taxes that they're already paying.
It's a good point, Mrs. Thompson. Any other board members have a comment about the, uh, let's go with the non-homestead renewal first, and we'll get on to the sinking fund.
Mr. Goodie, did you suggest or mention that you were going to be doing meetings in the community? Um, and exactly what meetings? Do you plan on holding them days, times? Do you have any of that information at all?
No, we, we have a second date for it, but what we'll do is, um, do several virtual meetings, uh, we'll be attending different community meetings, um, different council meetings. It'll be talked about, we, we have a Pride Committee Facebook page that has already begun posting information, um, and more information. That day, he was being offered frequently asked questions to help describe each of the two different, uh, villages that are up. Um, but yeah, we'll be posting that, sending out, be a school freshman, that I'll be having some talks, um, sharing that.
I think that one of the things with the non-homestead is we have to support our local businesses too. I mean, they're the ones that are, have been paying those taxes for a long time, and I think that, that's why it's so important that, you know, we as schools do as much as we can for local business, to support them so that they can in turn, you know, help support us, because without the school, businesses wouldn't be doing very well here. And so it's kind of a, we have to make sure everybody knows it's a two-way street. We have to support the businesses, and then the businesses support us. So right now, there, there is some, you know, businesses are hurting, and so as much as we can support them, we still have to do that too.
It's a good point. Okay, so that's a non-homestead, so sinking fund, um... Does the sinking fund committee, um, have anything that, that they'd like the, let the board know now, or anything that's, that we can help with?
Well, we put the sinking fund committee together to kind of identify about the areas that are very important. So the sinking fund is a little different than the Pride Committee, so the sinking fund is the board members, myself, administration that have kind of identified these high key areas. Um, and you pointed out a couple of big ones, parking lots on the side of the street, the roofs, um, across the street, we want to look at, uh, doing bathrooms, uh, like your bathrooms are in a time of, uh, need to replace, all touch-free, public safety. Across the street, we're looking at replacement of the heating units and all of our platforms over there, that's something that we've been finding that we're dealing with, very outdated equipment over there. Um, it's an older building, you know, it's things that we've been able to repair, repair, but it's time for replacement. Um, if you look outside the cafeteria this way, um, to the, to the south, there's a grassy area that's, hasn't been used a whole lot because of the drainage. Unfortunately, with everything settled, the water now sits on the patio area. Um, part of the company that is coming into, that has given us some of the asphalt replacement, gave us a pull too, uh, to make that an all- paid area. Uh, so it'd be a functional area. The two doors that are down this way here are our robotics room and our band room, and of course, robotic tech is there in the winter months, and the others fall, so we have them treading through the mud, and to get to their rooms, which is something that, uh, we need to put, uh, to fix for them. We remove that barn that's out there, the patio extends to the, uh, end of the sidewalk that's existing up there, give them a very easy access, all-paid area. Um, the other part of that conversation, depending on pricing, is to do type, some type of coverage on top of that, uh, so we could possibly use that as a venue for bands, um, smaller nuts like that, uh, it'd definitely be good for staging before football games. Um, most of the time when we have a home game, there's going to be two there that rain, so it'd be a very nice area. So that's, that's another project that we did identify, would be a, a well-spent, um...
And I think the thing too, we have not had a sinking fund for very many years. It has been around, this is our fifth year, fourth, and one of the things that's happened is our buildings are now 20 years old. You know, our, our new high school is 20 years old, and even though it still looks like it's the new high school, it's not. And so the sinking fund, what has happened with that, it allows us to keep up with the maintenance, the repairs, and, um, then the rest of the money can be spent with education, you know, with kids. So I think that that's the other thing, that the sinking fund is a necessity to keep our buildings, heating, all of that, and so we don't get that up where we were five years ago with the company.
The sinking fund allows us to not use general fund dollars in areas that typically we would. Um, this last sinking fund, this is the end of the, this is our fifth year, our last question, July 1st, um, which leave, um, levy about 1.3 million dollars. Uh, we have done an outstanding job of using those dollars. Without them, we would not have one of our Chromebooks that we have now, or the 75-plus jetpacks that we sent home to all of our community members when we were closed, for those that didn't have internet. We put $50,000 a year into technology to help make sure that we have everything. I think we are one of the districts in the county that was able to provide internet for every student, a device for every student, plus we have Wi-Fi in all of our buildings. We now have Wi-Fi in all of our parking lots, our football field, so there's some really good things that we've done with the sinking fund, um, besides, you know, the security measures that we put in all the lighting, um, so there's a lot of different things. So again, bill rates about that same amount. It's a renewal, it's a one-mil, uh, renewal, so it has no, no increase for any of our taxpayers, uh, we're hoping for another five years for it, and again, it's, it's just a, a great thing that's, it's worked for us.
Indeed. So if there's anything we can do for the Pride Committee, if there's any, any way the board can support, obviously, if you are interested in doing that, if there's any information when you have the, uh, meetings, certainly, um, a non-core of the board should be present, possible, so, um, if Mr. Goodie can let us know, uh, when you're going to schedule those, or if, uh, one of us or a couple of us can go to any of those meetings, uh, to advocate for either one, that'd be great.
Mr. Goodie, can we, um, from the sinking fund for the past five years, uh, what we were anticipating to use the sinking fund money for, what we used it for, what we didn't get to, and why? I think that'd be very helpful for the community, because they do have questions of, well, we were going to fix the parking lot for last sinking fund, we didn't, what happened? We're going to have to explain that to people and just be transparent of, this is what we were going to do, this is what we didn't get to, this is why, and this is what we need to do. Because regardless, we stopped, we're going to get fixed, and if the sinking fund doesn't get go-through, it's going to continue to be how it is. So, I mean, this is something that we really need to push, especially with the heat in elementary and everything. So I think we really need to be transparent, put out there, exactly what was our anticipation, what did we do, what didn't we do, and then what are we going to do, and why?
They actually, we're actually making a video to do that, um, Mr. Rush has actually put a really nice video we should have ready next week to send out, um, but if, yes, it'll explain all of that. Uh, the, the biggest one was in our, our, our current sinking village, our sinking fund, um, was the parking lot on the side of the road, um, when we originally took it to the board, that was a big push. As we brought in companies to go through and assess everything in our district, um, they identified the boiler system at the elementary as being in dire need of replacement. Uh, two boilers over there, 50-plus years old, and, um, they started discussing with us, if a boiler goes down, what it's going to do, and exposure of a building for three to four weeks minimum, uh, the cost of rushing companies in to get that replaced, and the board had, you know, at that time, decided that was more important, um, to make sure that was a priority on that list. With that, we still did repairs for the parking lot, you know, we fixed cockholes. Uh, we had four drains, two in the back and two in the front, that had, had sunk above two foot, you know, so they came in, dug those out, rebuilt them so that they're, uh, level and operating again, um, so, some repairs were done, but it wasn't the complete repair that we originally hoped for. Um, so yes, we will make sure and get all that information in the rest of our projects, because we took down a lot of new projects, too. We had smaller projects, um, that we're able to, to complete with, uh, the additional funds.
And I just think that's exactly what the community needs to know. The parking lot, they get, we need a boiler, that kind of trumps the parking lot every day, so I just think that's what people need to understand, what it went for, and why we had to do what we had to do. Thank you.
The, the exact sheets, have they been sent to the board?
Any other comments or discussion on sinking, on our operating village renewal? All right, we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
Just a few of them. I wanted to share, I like the hot topic, obviously, right now with closures of all the schools in our county and in the state. As I shared a little earlier, right now, we're just watching it. We've been very fortunate with COVID, the number of cases and the number of exposures in our district. Right now, it's manageable. Staff, you know, we right now are able to staff by classrooms. That's been a concern and a reason for a lot of the local districts. The discussion for after spring break is one that we're having as a district and consulting with the health department. We know that a lot of families are going to be traveling over spring break and there's some concerns of that. Obviously, depending on what state you go to, COVID numbers, and what it might look like. We are trying to figure out whether or not we can test the percentage of our students prior to return, maybe on the fourth or fifth, or however that looks like that week. And that way, we can get a good idea of how our community is reacting to spring break and whether or not it would be safe for us to continue. Right now, I think it is our plan to remain face-to-face every day that we are able to. That's the best thing for our students. But we obviously are taking into consideration the safety of our staff and our students. So we'll contend around her back, you know, as we go on with that. So very content right now with the way things are going, you know, through another day with the new cases. With the testing that we're talking about, the governor released that she now wants to test all athletes beginning April 2nd. That is Thursday of, Thursday, Friday of spring break for us. We will not begin testing our athletes until Monday the 5th. So we're working on a schedule for that. It is our goal to test our athletes every Monday in the morning to identify if students that may be positive. Because that would really reduce our risk of exposure. If we can find them first hour on Monday, get them out of the buildings, they're not here till Tuesday, Wednesday, it could possibly expose even more students. So it's our goal to get better in place. Would we anticipate that to be between 125 and 150 student athletes this spring? So just kind of getting that all processed is where we're at right now. The tests will be provided by ARESA. It is something we submit out by need to be coming to test. And then they send those tests back to ARESA and they're redistributed to the local districts. We talked a little bit about the summer school plans. Like we said, that 20% of the listeners read, about $160,000 has restrictions. We're looking at those restrictions, seeing how we can get it. We will be offering summer programs regardless. Obviously, if we can cater our summer programs to meet those requirements, we will. If not, we'll make sure those continue. It's not something if we don't get it, we're not going to do it. Ways students that need it, we'll make sure that they get it. So we'll continue working on those and submit the plans by the April 15 deadline. I met with the NDA twice on the calendar. We are very close. We have the 21, 22 calendar for you for the April board meeting. It was my goal to have it tonight. Unfortunately, we're not quite there. We're hung up on about three hours. So it's not a big deal and it's not something I don't have any issue with. We're just fixing a few things, whether we're going to do half-days for midterms or we're going to do reduced days for midterms, you know. So just fighting through or figuring out those things. We do have a pre-labor day start. That is a waiver that is becoming wide waiver. Same thing that this year, we started pre-labor day, we got a waiver for it. We do have that waiver again, so we will be starting pre-labor day. And we will get that dates, those calendars out to everybody as soon as they're approved. The other thing is the CDC coming out with new recommendations on health requirements, health guidelines. I met with Dr. Burkutan, the Health Department and Homeland Security last Thursday. Right now, we are continuing with our six feet for all tracing and everything else we're doing. The St. Clair County Health Department's recommendation is to continue six feet. Until they give further information and change anything for us, we will stick with their guidelines. They are the ones that can shut us down. They are the ones that kind of keep an eye on everything that we are doing. You know, they are also the ones that I communicate with to make sure they feel it's okay that we remain face-to-face. So keeping them on their good side is their best interest. That is all I have. Any questions?
Mr. Gudie, I have a few questions for you. Going back to the holiday break, during Christmas time and even here, do we have any numbers of how many positive cases happened during that time? Or is that information that was not a privilege to give it to us and the individuals to stay home? I'm just curious if there was a lot of exposure during the holiday time and we just didn't know it, or we didn't know it upon the return?
I don't have those numbers for funding, it's very low. The other two certainly bad news, if anybody was positive or exposed, they weren't sharing it at that time.
Okay.
The only time we would know that is if they reported to the Health Department and the Health Department contacted us.
Right.
Those exposures, we heard no exposures, of course, because we weren't in session.
Exactly. I was just curious if there was any positives back there or actually thereafter. Another question I have about the testing by ARESA, the COVID tests. Do we pay for any of that or does that come out of, what budget does the COVID testing come out of?
There's no cost to the administration, it's all state-funded.
It's all state-funded, okay. And how many staff members do we have trained to do the COVID testing for our athletes?
Currently, we have two coaches that were trained, the athletic director. There was a meeting in September that believed there was all spring coaches and new coaches that were invited to like to be trained.
Do you have a total number of how many will be trained?
I can tell you that there's probably 12 at least, would you say?
Yeah, I think 12 to 14 there's.
Yeah, 12 to 14 of us are trained. And then we talked to about the meeting is the one person that the coach is out of town or can't be there for that Monday to test our students, another coach will take over and test those students. So the students will be all tested, whether their, I don't know, we'll just work together on it and figure it out.
Based on the recommendation from the state for the testing, it takes about six people, six coaches to do our tests in the morning. Like I said, to get to about 125, 100 students. We figured we have an hour an hour. Student doesn't have to wait any longer. We do this nasal swap, we get the tests running, and then we're checking them at 15:30 in the window. So we can go in and swap and have all the tests laid out. And as they come back, we didn't know who it is. And if we had a positive, we'd get that student, remove them, and obviously go through the tracing process.
Are you comfortable with how many people you've got set up for March 5th?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we're in really good shape. About April 5th, yes. Like Mr. O'Keefe did a awesome job getting all the coaches there. We have basically every person, every coaching person, staff in the spring has been trained and then some additional.
Mr. Gudie, are we going to be sending home to parents and or the teachers that are intended to return after spring break but to be ready, you know, in case the numbers really go up or, you know, so the teachers are prepared? They might have to do virtual that one day. And parents are aware that it could happen even, yeah.
We've shared with the staff currently that we are planning face-to-face. If we go virtual, it's something that will work for them. If we need to provide data to for them to prepare for it, we would. The biggest concern for that week after spring break is we can't go two whole weeks because of the ACT test. I'm sorry, not ACT test, April 13th. So we can get that whole week after so that we can able to fit, not going any further than that, which obviously you want to try to get to with windows, just not feasible because we do all testing on that Tuesday. For us to pull out Chromebooks from the cart for every student to take home is a huge undertaking. So unless something drastic occurred, we need to go home soon. At this time, it would not be setting Chromebooks for every student or, but it would be for select few that need that, so.
Can you clarify something, because you couldn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Gudie?
Oh, why?
When you were talking about the testing, you said that the student or the athlete will be swapped. They will be able to go back to class? And then if they are positive, then now we've just potentially exposed a classroom of students? Is there a better way of doing this procedure than to put that at risk?
The only, the only thing with it is 150 kids in that first hour instead of having them all miss first hour. They have to be somewhere, you know, not at a, we'll try to get them here before school and test as many as we can before class. But I don't see it as feasible at this time to make that happen, you know, if you have them all sitting in there waiting. By the time you get to that last student, maybe 45 minutes in, and they've missed first hour. So we're kind of going through that to see if it's feasible to do it. The other way, but at this time, it's our goal is that they only have one hour of tracing or exposure.
I don't think there's going to be that many opportunities where they're going to be. Because I mean, really by the time they're swapped, it's 15 minutes before the results come back. And there's like so much paperwork aspect to it that really by the time that they're probably done, their 15 minutes is out and you're going home. So really, it's like a 15 minute from swabbing to your results. And there's tons of paperwork that you can fill out at each time.
So I'm concerned that if you're back and positive, you need some of that.
I mean, if there's enough coaches, I don't think that'll be a situation.
I think, I think what Mr. Frigley was saying today is that some of those tests, some of the positive ones, you've seen, come pretty quick.
Yeah.
They want to wait 15 minutes for an accurate, you know, but if it's positive, it shows up quick.
Yeah. All the positives that he had, he did say, you're going to tell within a couple of minutes of whether they're positive or not. You obviously wait the whole 15 for, but they're like a permanency test. So you know.
Well, and remember, we're only testing the athletes. So there's several hundred other kids that frankly could be positive that are out there. So we have to follow the directions on the athletic rules at this point. But I mean, I think the plan is good. If you need additional help, you know, I know that it lets us overstaff. If you need to, yes, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Gudie? All right, we have come to board roundtable. Open it up to the board.
Mr. President, this, just a week ago, we had the St. Clair County School Board Association that had a Zoom meeting with the different boards. And Leslie and I both attended. And I had the paperwork deck sent, I had it all forward to everyone so that you could look through. But they did cover different, you know, things, social, emotional learning, quality childcare in St. Clair County, which is unfortunately going down because of, there's a lot of places more that are closing because of COVID and that, which is sad because you still have a lot of people that have to go to work. And with the lesser amount, they're trying to, wanting to, you know, they're keeping track of that now and I think they're wanting to do something about it. So we just be kind of becoming involved and wanting to kind of move in a positive, you know, way for that. And then also even the tech offerings and the new programs in the, all they are doubling the computer programming because it's just something that's just needed nowadays, you know, with the technical advances that we are having. And so they have doubled that. And so we will be able to send work from Memphis too. And then they're also offering again education, which they used to a long time ago. And then they took it away because it wasn't that popular. And now it's becoming popular again, you know, so they want to put that because too, there's a lot of teachers that kind of, you know, it's like a kind of, you know, swells, you know, where we get a lot and then it kind of, and then it kind of goes back away. So it's nice to see more offerings and just that, you know, more members can become involved also. So all in all, it was a good Zoom meeting and I was glad that we were able to attend. The updates from Jennifer Smith actually had a, does a better job.
This is being recorded.
It's just, there's so much going on in the state with the, let's say, that all these decisions and everything. Adam puts it out much clearer to us. So it was, it's hopefully, and I agreed on that. It was like, oh, that was a little bit much for us, but I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mrs. McKeever. Thank you, Mrs. Roosevelt, for attending that.
Mrs. Q, well, you said there's going to be an increase in numbers of decisions that they're going to offer from Memphis to the tech. Now, is it an increase of?
No, I mean, there's going to be two new programs so we can get another couple of kids in there, you know.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is it like you'll, Memphis gets so many spots on the education and then Memphis gets so many spots in computers, is that general?
Yeah, it's just basically because of our, our school is the smallest school, we get the lower amount of spots. And then it's just, that's what happens. It doesn't mean that, unfortunately, it doesn't mean that if court here and doesn't take it, there's more. It's like they have, we have this many spots. And so, you know, and, you know, it just, that's the way it is, you know, with us being small. But we have fewer kids than that, you know, want to do. But we really do have a great tech attendance. You know, I think we have a lot of kids that attend and that stick with it and that, so. But yeah, unfortunately, it's two more classes and so what, we get a couple more kids. So that's just how it is.
And I forgot to mention, but brought it up, I was accepted into Western Michigan University for the graduate study program. I've been working with Payn at Tech. And with this, I can take a classroom to and get my CTE endorsement. With my endorsement, that'll allow me to oversee programs here. So it wouldn't have to be somebody from Tech coming out. We will still fall under the tech umbrella. They'll provide the training for these programs. But it's a step closer to giving a few more offerings to our kids. There are a lot of hoops to jump through to make it happen, smaller classroom tech classes, things like that. But I have been working with them and I have a class that'll start May 1st or June 20th or after that. So end of June, I'll have an endorsement for our CTE, which will allow us to, in the fall, hopefully, add a few more slots.
Okay, good. What's our percentage, it's a percentage of our total enrollment?
Basically, they look at total students in the county. We're about six and a half, seven percent. And that gets us about two slots in every program.
We're talking about tech right now, I just have a quick question. Now, tech has gone virtual starting today, correct? And that runs through April 19th?
Currently, I believe just this week, we have not gotten notification when they're doing after spring break yet.
Okay.
My assumption, because we will probably be the only one face-to-face, is that they will remain virtual for that week after spring break and return face-to-face on the 12th.
And how are we managing those students in tech to make sure that they are keeping up? I mean, I know it's up to the instructor at Tech and so forth, but is there open communication going on with the district and tech and how these students are managing both coming to school and, you know, doing temporary?
Hi, so we, we talked with Mrs. Rochak over there at Tech and they are, they're down for at least this week. So what we're offering our students today was to, either they can, either they can go home after third hour or do transportation for those that need it, that starts as well. Also, they can also remain here, work in the media center and provide them with, or when they go home, provide them with a Chromebook and a hotspot in. And then also here, they can work from our, from our library or media center here in the mobile section where we're going to have for them. There's, I think, two or three students will take advantage of that. Most want to go home and work, so they'll do that and they'll call that out. And then as far as their progress, if Mrs. Rochak or the instructors sees that, so it hasn't been doing any work, has been logging on, then contact us, we'll reach out to the students while they're here. We'll kind of take that, do it that way. It's kind of heaven watching every one of these things going on.
I have another, I have a question regarding tech that maybe you can answer, Mr. Cracker. So you said that there's two slots per program? So how are?
Some are more, some are less, some are three, some are one, some are two. It just depends on what we give.
Okay, so let's say there's five students that want to do Program A, how are they selected?
There's, there's, there's different criteria. We'll look at grades, we'll look at interests, we'll look at their, in passing, we'll look at their career cruising, or their sellout, it's called sellout now, their interests, that kind of see how these match up. We'll also, they'll also go to Tech and go to the open houses and see, you know, does the program really fit them? They'll talk to the counselors there as well. So we kind of go through all that process. Then there is also actually, for some of the programs, they have essays that the students write or they'll be looked at by the tech program to see which students, you know, will offer them. And we'll say, we've got these three, and they may choose from those two as well. So it's really, there's, there's just a lot of different criteria going to it. We do have a lot of students that are interested in things like passing while they, but what we try to do is if we, if you have two spots, we have two students that are prime candidates for that, and we're trying to split the others. One's to maybe a secondary direction, and then we use their career cruising, now we use their sellout interest in terms of what else might they fit into. Some students here have actually fit into things that they think they would fit into, and they end up liking it. Some students here have actually fit into things that they think they would fit into, and they end up like. With the new program that Mrs. McKeer was talking about, I believe there's 43 total spots, or 48 total spots, and we'll get that percentage of that, so it'd probably be two.
Okay, thank you.
Two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Frigley. Anything else? I just have a couple of quick things. One, I know several board members have reached out and have been communicated with, from parents and concerned citizens about COVID and quarantine in our policies. And, you know, I think there's, I believe that we have been steadfast in our drive to keep our schools open. Certainly, right now is a great example, where almost every school in the county is going, gone virtual. And Memphis is still hanging tough open. I think it says a lot about our direction, and our want to keep our kids in school where they belong. So I would just ask, anyone listening to this or seeing you later on the video, just be, be patient with the administration, if you try to work through this, because it is a challenging time. We want to stay open. That's, that's been our stance as a board for this entire time, to stay open, unless they tell us we have to shut down. The other thing is I just did want to address, 9:40 in the morning, there was a police situation in Memphis, and I'm very proud to say that by 9:43 AM, our schools went into lockdown. Obviously, that situation did not affect the school, but this is why we do drills. And so kudos to the central office staff, the building administrators, and everybody involved. And very quickly went into that lockdown procedure. I know it creates a lot of angst for parents. Several board members having children in the school, and grandchildren perhaps. And so I know there's a lot of angst around that, and that's why the school does drills. It's the poster child for that, so the situation was handled correctly and swiftly, and that should make everyone feel better about all those, all those procedures. Anyone else have anything? Do we have anything for close session tonight?
Can I just add to Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Gubbe, please. I just want to say to thumbs off what you're saying, to exact, and how proud, I think everybody has been in the community, how well the situation was handled, how fast families were notified. There was minimal time that went by before families were notified. Situation was under control, suspects in custody, kids were safe. I commend the staff and others for their fast action, and also being calm. I spoke to many students, many in elementary school who are younger. They, they acted it, it was just a drill. They came home, didn't discuss the topic until maybe a couple days later. But it's very proud that all the teachers, staff are made calm. It just gives a sense of calm to all the children as well, and it's one thing to thank you, to everybody.
Especially for elementary school, 40 minute lockdown, like my daughter been home in 40 days, she's like, "Mom, they have this forever," it was like 30 minutes, like 40 actually, but. Like, for people that are just like that, not terrified for that amount of time, I would say everyone did a great job on that.
Yes, Mr. Frigley.
Also, a shout out to Officer DeLucky, our liaison officer was here, got the call, was there, and had kind of, kind of, that thought to let us know what's going on in the back here, right after, so.
Excellent, a shout out. No close session, I'll promote your folks.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:55 AM.
Who was that? Thank you, I'm just going to ask for that one. I can't see anybody's lips moving. Most of my, Mr. Fatsian, Mr. Fatsian is supported by Mrs. Kirk to adjourn, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close?
7:55.
7:55.